Call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer for our servicemen and women throughout the world and also for all those who have passed away in our community. Roll call please.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr.?
Here.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Mr. Evans? Mr. Rogan?
Here.
And Mr. Rogan?
Here. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3/8, Agenda for the Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting to be held July 11, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3B Minutes of the Scranton-Lacawanna Health and Welfare Authority Meeting, held February 15, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3C Tax Assessors Report, for hearing date to be held July 18, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have announcements?
I have one announcement to make. Lacawanna County Commissioners declared a Code Red, a hot weather alert, as we all know. The heat's been ridiculous lately and it can get to dangerous levels. What they do is they utilize the forecast from the National Weather Service. Anytime the heat index gets over 100 degrees, they do issue a Code Red. This one is going from June 30 until Monday, which is today, July 2, until 9 o'clock at night. Obviously, we want to make sure we're in an air conditioning room, you stay hydrated, don't do anything excessive outside for any long periods of time. And during a Code Red Alert, homeless individuals can access emergency shelter at the following locations: St. Anthony's Haven, 409 Olive Street, Scranton; their hours are 7:30 to 8:00 a.m., and the Community Intervention Center, 445 North Sixth Ave; and the hours are 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a few. City Hall will be closed this Wednesday, July 4, in observations of the holiday. Refuse and Recycling Collection will be one day behind after Wednesday of this week. We'd like to wish everyone a safe and happy holiday. Colts will be closed with no bus service on July 4. Regular bus service will resume on Thursday. Lacawanna County is distributing Farmers Market Nutrition Program vouchers at the following locations: The West Scranton Senior Center on Jackson Street, Wednesday, July 11, from 9 to 1 p.m. The Marketplace at Steamtown, Thursday, July 12, from 2 to 7 p.m. The South Scranton Farmers Market on the 300 block of Alder Street, Saturday, July 14, from 10 to 1 p.m. And the South Scranton Senior Center at 425 Alder, Wednesday, July 18, from 9 to 1 p.m. And if anyone didn't catch all those, you could always contact our office or your state representative's office and they'd be happy to help. And just to note again, council meetings from the month of July will be held at 12:30 p.m. and they will be televised on ECTV.
Excuse me. Fourth Order, Citizens' Participation.
Joan Hodor-Wannitz.
July 2nd means the year is half over. Bet you didn't think it went that fast. Also, it means that there's only 28 more days before you take your August recess. So I think it's appropriate to once again look forward to some of the documents and issues that we, the public, are waiting for. One is the city's independent audit, which has a direct impact on budget planning for next year. And of course, another one is the Arcadis Stormwater Management Study, which was supposed to have been available last fall and we're still waiting on that. And that should have a major impact in planning for next year's budget. And another thing we've been waiting for is what you might be proposing in terms of pension reform, so that we don't have another issue like we did with the double pensions. So those are just three of the things that come to mind. Also, I don't know if you're aware of it, but the May Controllers' Report is late. It's because one of the employees in the office was out due to medical issues, I believe. But at any rate, normally that would have been published and available to the public for review in mid-June. So it's still not ready. Hopefully, if not this week, next week. And then right behind it should be the June report. And those are things you should be looking at because part of ongoing budget processing should be looking at where we stand vis-à-vis revenues and expenditures, and are we on target. So those things we should be looking for. Last Wednesday, I went to the county commissioners' meeting and on the agenda was an item that, at the beginning of the meeting, they pulled, but it may resurface. And I'd like to mention it here because it would have a direct impact on the city as a taxing authority. There is a proposal to privatize the collection of delinquent real estate taxes. And I believe it was Attorney Joyce's Municipal Capital Recovery LLC was proposed to undertake this activity. And if you looked at the backup, which even though they pulled the item from last week's agenda, the executive summary reads as follows. MCR, the Municipal Capital Recovery, proposes to assume the statutory duties of the Lacawanna County Tax Claim Bureau for the collection of delinquent real estate taxes owed to Lacawanna County and other taxing districts within the county. So my question is, has the county even discussed such a proposal with the city as one of the taxing authorities? I mean, that shouldn't even come up until it had discussed it with all the taxing authorities within the county, especially the city and the Scranton School District. So should that raise its head again? I hope somebody within the administration or city council asks those questions. And questions about, you know, what kind of fees is this company going to get? Is this a savings to the taxpayer? Even though there may be no requirement to bid it out as a professional service, I fully support competition. Maybe we can get a better deal from someone else, but I was surprised to hear about it and I'd like to know, did the administration have a heads-up on this? Because it sounds to me like they may reintroduce it. Right now, the county treasurer's looking at it. But if that were to be raised again, it shouldn't be done so until they talk to every other taxing authority. And finally, under the heading of "What Can Kids Do During the Summer?", I remind you that the county and city libraries have all kinds of programs. And I'm just going to mention one. This one is at the Library Express Bookstore at the Marketplace at Steamtown on July 12 at 3 p.m. That's a Thursday. Skin and Scales with Leo Spinner. It's a live reptile show. Herptologist Leo Spinner will introduce us to baby alligators, huge tortoises, strange turtles, snakes, lizards, amphibians, invertebrates, and much more. And if you'd like to register, you call 570-558-1670. But this is an example of the things that the library system does for our children. And I hope that as many people as possible take advantage of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
There was a sign-in sheet that someone was ahead of me.
Yeah, the resident or the individual that signed in.
Pardon?
I'm not allowed to speak.
Sir, you're out of order. We will talk to you after the meeting, but non-residents, non-business owners are not allowed to speak at our council meetings. We'll be happy to help you.
Marie Schumacher. First of all, I'd like to say I was happy to see finally the RFP for the paving for this year in today's paper. But I would like to know if you can provide the list of the streets that are being paved that covers today?
No, but I would, I was planning on asking Mrs. Reed to get us a copy of that list.
Okay.
So as soon as I have it, I'll share it.
I think you need to come up with a policy because I did write and ask for the policy and procedures for selecting those streets and I was rejected because there is no such thing. And I think that's appalling. I think there should be a process. And I think if you have to pay to put it in a legal notices, what streets are being paved? And I feel a little uncomfortable in that the quotes are due. Now, the streets aren't available, but the RFPs have to be responded to about two weeks from today. The opening is 10:15 on the 16th of this month. So, you know, that's a very short time, depending on how many blocks of paving have to be done. But I think you need a procedure. I think it needs, the streets need to be advertised in advance and people allowed to comment on them because last year's roads were appalling, including, again, that Leslie which was done by the water company within the last five years and was perfect, but we redid it. Okay. Next, Electric City Garage. I hope Jim Lockwood goofed when he said that we had paid the amount, I think it's like $2.8 million, to Steamtown 300. Because as I recall, and I would like you to check it out, as I recall, we were supposed to only pay, we were sharing, it was a cost-sharing with Basilika on the upgrades that were made. And since no upgrades have been made, I also did a write-to-know asking how much of that was gone, and I was told nothing. But if it's all gone, I'd like to know. If it's not all gone, I'd like to know what account, and I've asked this several times before, what account is that being retained? Is there an escrow account for that?
There is an escrow.
And then?
There is an SPA escrow account.
And then, that leads right into Scranton Parking Authority. Why are they not paying that insurance that the city agreed to pay to ABM for the insurance of the garages? I think that's terrible. I think it's terrible that it didn't come before you. Did you ask anybody why it didn't come before you? I mean, that's a long-term commitment. It's only, you know, maybe $32,000 or more thousand dollars a year, but hey, I don't think we city taxpayers should be picking that up. I think the authority should pay that and that should be cleared out of the other account. And again, the audit delay, I wish somebody would explain why we're having the delay. We hire a company to help. We made it one year. Happened to be an election year, of course. And we need to know it. I need to, I would like to know the cash flow. I mean, the last time we were advised of the revenues over expenses, the repayment of the TAN at the end of this month is going to take a big chunk out of that. So I think we need to know where we stand in a cash flow position. And then that gets me back to the EC Garage. I remember Mayor Courtright one time referring to Mr. Basilika as his partner. And I wonder if there's something going on under the current that they don't do the, perhaps don't make the improvements that they were imminent because that garage had to be torn down. It was so terrible. But yet, it seems to be operating several years later without any problems, or major problems anyway. So are we just not doing that so we save the money because the cash flow is too tight for this year? I think those are important things. And again, the Arcadis study. Mr. Bolzoni said 10 months. Maybe he meant 10 months overdue? I don't know. But we've had two major storm waters. You've all seen the one that came out. And the other one was done by the county. And both of those should have formed a pretty firm basis for what Arcadis was signed up to do. And I, for the life of me, cannot figure out why they haven't done it. Do we have a firm date for receiving that?
We'll find out today. We're meeting Mr. Bolzoni today.
And the audit. What is the status of the audit? What's holding it up? And then again, the parking. May I finish that? I think your own code, which I wrote it down, anyway, the code, it's Article 4 of your code, Section 2, or 439-20 specifies there is no all-street parking at the meters. You know, I'm sure anybody who's currently parking overnight would soon find other accommodations if they were to get a $25 ticket every time they parked overnight. So I would suggest we start enforcing the code and seeing what those people do. Because I see no reason, I mean, they knew when they moved downtown. I thought these were all the, what they used to be called yuppies, that either bike to work or walk to work. But apparently, they're all, they own a lot of cars.
Thank you.
And I think we should impose the, we should enforce the code or change it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Good afternoon, council. I'm back. Hi. Lenny Srebro, Scranton resident, as of yesterday. A bunch of years noted, I had a fire back in October and the house burned. And just yesterday, like I said, you know, I got back into the house. So here I am again. I mean, you know, moving back in, it's overwhelming what you got to go through to move. But coming back to the house, same old, same old problems. You know, last week, we had a pretty nasty storm and it was, once again, just like old times. The backyard got flooded. It was under a foot or two of water until it evaporates. It has nowhere to go. What I would like to propose, you know, we all know the problem with the flooding in the area and drainage pipe and all that. But getting back to my home place, that retention pond is literally filled to the top with sediment. Nothing goes anywhere. No more, the pond doesn't do anything at all. Can we please get the city to just come and clean out the pond? I'm telling you, it's filled to the top. It's covering the drainage pipe. There's nowhere for all this water to go. I mean, isn't that like a regular maintenance thing for the city to clean that pond out? You know, I don't mean to bring up the drainage pipe problem, but that's for another time. But see, I'm asking for a little compassion. It's unbelievable, that stagnant water that sits there till it evaporates. Everything's underwater, the mosquitoes, the flies, the gnats, all the bugs, all kinds of other critters are everywhere in the neighborhood. Everybody agrees, like there's something. We even brought up the thing that the nurse, that they can't find their body. Maybe it's around there somewhere. It's unbelievable, the flies that are everywhere. If you could please look into the city like cleaning out that pond. Let's see here. Now, one of the last meetings that we had about that drainage pipe in the pond, the engineers that we met with from Scranton, they left us with the idea that it's up to the individual to sue the water, the water management system. Jeez, all the neighbors talked about it afterwards and we think that's all wrong for the individual to have to burden themselves with suing the water management system. Shouldn't that be the city suing the water management system that they're not taking care of what they're supposed to be? You know, that's my question there. But once again, like I said, boy, if we can clean out that pond, you know. But coming back to the house now and it's still the same as it was, but at least I'm begging that, you know, maybe the city will come and just dig out the muck that's there and it'll relieve it, you know, a little bit more. Yeah, I have a question Marie brought up about the paving. I'd like to find out, if possible, that, the alley that separates my garage and the house, I mean, there's neighbors living along that alleyway, hasn't been paved in about 40 or 50 years. Now, I seen them in the neighborhood marking roads and I asked the guy who was doing that, well, can you tell me, you know, it looks like you're marking for paving and I don't understand all those numbers and arrows and stuff, but he says that, yeah, they're planning to do some paving in this area. The next row down, same thing, hasn't been paved in about 40 years, that last road. And there's houses living along it, you know, people living in those houses. Now, see, two of those houses are abandoned from the flooding problem, but there's still more residents on that last road there that we don't know if they're going to pave. We're trying to find out when and where. Now, the guy said, yeah, they're going to be paving, but he couldn't tell me anything. That's what I'd like to find out, like what paving they're doing. Thanks. Great to see you guys again.
Thank you. And as Councilman Gahn mentioned, we are going to get a copy of that paving list and go through it ourselves as well. Anyone else who would like to address council?
Fifth Order, 5A motions.
Mr. Perry, any motions or comments?
The only comment I have for today is 4th of July is coming up. Be safe, enjoy it, and I'll see you next Monday.
Thank you very much. Mr. Donahue, any motions or comments?
Really, only the comment I, only comment I have is I completely agree with what Joan brought up about the Tax Claim Bureau. I think we should be involved in that. So, Mrs. Reed, would you be able to send a letter to the county asking for information regarding the privatization of the Tax Claim Bureau? And that's all I have. Everyone have a safe and happy 4th of July.
Thank you. Mr. Evans, any motions or comments?
Well, since I wasn't here last week, I guess I get a little extra time, so I'm going to expouse a little bit. The recent report that the so-called Castle House is once again moving towards demolition only exacerbates the viewpoint that our condemnation policy, as well as our demolition policy, is clearly in need of a full review. When we cannot find solutions to solving the Castle House dilemma, then we're doing something wrong. When we condemn houses only because they may be vacant and because they have tall grass, then we're doing something wrong. We have homes that should be and could be rehabbed consistently facing the wrecking ball, then we are doing something wrong. We need to take a different look at vacant and abandoned properties and begin to categorize and prioritize them, allowing for different approaches and solutions to individual properties. Each abandoned property can be viewed differently and should be treated differently. A first example would be if a house is abandoned, but it can be repaired right now, then the lift needs to do everything possible to bring that building in compliance through enforcement of existing laws. Condemnation cannot be the sole answer because it simply is not the only answer. In fact, when a home is condemned in Scranton, you have effectively sentenced that property in many cases to a slow death toward demolition and marketability. You have immediately reduced that property's market value. You have reduced the market value of the neighboring properties and you could have very well reduced the market value of the entire block in that neighborhood. The resolution to removing a home from condemnation can be long and it can be difficult and it can be costly. While I'm not suggesting that property should never be condemned, that would be a naive viewpoint on my part, but it should be a process used with great care and with great consideration to the possible outcomes of the decision to condemn. To get back to my premise that vacant abandoned property should be reviewed differently in different categories, a second example of vacant homes would be those that can be repaired, but only at a later time. The Castle House would fit into this category. And this is where we struggle to do what we need to do. We struggle the most in that case. And this is where we need to get a coherent and consistent plan that allows for rehab, even if it takes time to get there. Demolition should always be the last solution to the problem. Some states have recently enacted Good Samaritan laws that allow any person or group to clean up and mow the grass around a house that has been determined to be abandoned without concern for liability. This could be a valuable tool in buying time to avoid demolition while keeping the outside of the property from being a neighborhood ISO. And the final example would be houses that can't be repaired for various other reasons. This might be the only time that demolition may in fact be appropriate. While we have made great strides with the advent of the land bank, there are properties that are abandoned or just vacant that sometimes do not fit neatly in that category that allows the land bank to step in. There may be other avenues like receivership that may be looked into, where the code enforcement department can ask the courts to name a nonprofit or another qualified person to make essential repairs and place a lien on the abandoned property, which will be reimbursed when the property is sold. So while there are many, there are no easy solutions and we need to begin to address this before we lose more houses that should be rehabbed, before we lose more blocks and more neighborhoods to blight, condemnation, and demolition. We need to make decisions based on new algorithms, data-driven decisions, and of course, common sense decisions. The lifeblood of our neighborhoods are single-family homes and the homeowners that live in them. We have an amazing stock of historic homes with lots of character. And when those homes are vacant and abandoned, demolition should be far down the list of options. So I'd like to further discuss this with my colleagues as far as how do we begin the process of offering solutions while making some positive changes? Maybe through a public caucus or a work session or even a task force. Whatever format is chosen is fine with me, but we need to get a handle on this issue and soon. So first, we'd like to commit to resolving the issue of the Castle House. And quite possibly, we may find through that process, we can begin to create a blueprint to solve future problems as well. In the meantime, Attorney Menora, if you could research state law to see if we have anything that mirrors the Good Samaritan laws that are used by other states, as well as the concept of receivership, if that would work for some properties as another tool in our fight against blight. So that's all I have for this evening. Thank you. Or this afternoon, I should say.
Thank you. Mr. Gahn, any motions or comments?
Yes, thank you. First, Mrs. Reed, if we could send something to the DPW or the city engineer asking about the retention pond that Mr. Srebro brought up, I would appreciate that. Also, I had a question. I meant to mention this last week. Read in the minutes of one of the pension board meetings about the city possibly splitting the cost of doctors' fees with the pension board. So if we could send a letter to the city solicitor and ask if they have a cost estimate for that yet, how much that would cost the city? And I would actually like to know more about how that would be, how that would be run. Also, in the caucus, I asked for an update on the status of the various lawsuits currently against the city. I would like to know where they are procedurally in the courts. And we also asked for a caucus with the city solicitor to give us an update on that. Several citizen concerns, quite a few in the plot. Traffic concerns on Bates, Brighton, and Gray Street. Heavy traffic. The gentleman that reached out to me would like the chief of police to be aware of several issues here, so we're going to send something to Chief Graziano. Also, I asked for an update, and I think I mentioned this two weeks ago, there's flooding issues on Kirst Court, 400 block of Duncan Street. Serious flooding. There's actually, when it rains, the water is pouring into this gentleman's in-ground pool. So I'd like an update on that from the DPW, if anybody's been out to take a look at that. Also, I did meet with a neighbor in the vicinity of the 1120 Columbia Street just this morning. And she did submit and wanted me to submit to this council a petition. I'm going to read that in a second. There are several pages of signatures here and then there are pictures of property at 1120 Columbia Street. So I do want to read this petition into the record. "To the Honorable City Council of the City of Scranton, we, the undersigned or property owners in the vicinity of 1120 Columbia-" owners in the vicinity of eleven-twenty Columbia Street, Scranton, please be advised that for the last nine years, we have watched this building and property deteriorate and become an eyesore in the neighborhood. Furthermore, be assured that it has had an adverse effect on our property values. Recently, a developer purchased a property, and much to our dismay, became aware on Thursday, June twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen, that the City Department of Licenses and Inspections, on the order of its director, Patrick Hinton, issued a stop-work order to the developer to halt cleaning up the property and removing all debris from the property. The developer is a well-respected property owner in Green Ridge. We have watched him rehabilitate numerous blighted properties throughout the city. We can attest to the great work he has done to improve dilapidated buildings throughout, uh, this municipality. The new owner of the property applied for a building perm, or for building permits on May thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. In addition, he provided the city with a ten-thousand-dollar bond as required for all condemned properties. He also informed the Department of Licenses, Inspections, and Permits of the timetable the work would be completed. Mr. Hinton has failed to approve his permits within the legal framework of fifteen days from submission of the application. Therefore, under Pennsylvania State Code, which is attached, we urge counsel to advise Mr. Hinton to issue said permits so that the developer can complete this project immediately. Mr. Hinton informed the owner he would need to apply to the City Housing Appeals Board to remove the property from the demolition list. The developer was assured he would be placed on the June Housing Appeals Board agenda. The Housing Appeal, the Housing Board of Appeals canceled their June meeting due to a lack of a quorum. We urge the department to immediately allow the work to be started as per the timetable outlined in the original permit application, since we cannot be assured that the board will have a quorum in the months of July and August. This eyesore should be of the utmost concern of the members of council, not only because of its condition, but moreover, the safety hazard it presents. One needs to look no further than last week's arson in an abandoned home on East Mountain that tragically killed one person due to a fire. Urge Mr. Hinton to comply with Pennsylvania State Code and issue these building permits immediately. Sincerely, the undersigned C. Attached petitioners." And as I mentioned, there's about three, three and a half pages of residents of Green Ridge who have signed these petitions, and there are also pictures that are attached that show the dilapidated condition of the building. Um, first of all, I would like to know if we could actually ask Mr. Hinton to come into a caucus and explain why he has not approved these permits, number one. Uh, and number two, you know, exactly why the City of Scranton and the Licensing and Inspections Department is not working with these developers who wanna put money into these properties and to fix them up. Um, it seems to me that instead of working with people, instead of working with developers, we're working against them, um, as Mr. Evans correctly, uh, pointed out a minute ago. And it's my belief that the city has been putting up too many roadblocks in front of these people for far too long. Um, demolition should be a last resort. Um, and it, it's my suggestion on, on the top of what Mr. Evans said, that maybe we should meet with contractors in the city and developers and find out, um, exactly what their opinions are on how they think that we can move forward. And I also would support, um, looking into a Good Samaritan law. There's many times where people are sick and tired of waiting for, uh, a bank to send somebody out, or a property owner to cut the grass, and they would just like to go and clean it up themselves so they don't have to look at it any longer. So there are people that are willing to help and willing to go out of their way. Um, but again, the city, uh, presents, prevents them from doing that because of the liability. Um, and I have similar concerns and feelings about the Castle House in Green Ridge. Uh, it is a beautiful building, and the city does wanna demolish that. I think we should give, uh, people the opportunity to either purchase it or rehab it. Um, and I was glad to hear today that the grass has finally been cut there. So again, the city should be building up instead of, uh, tearing down. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, just one brief comment, then I have a couple of comments on agenda items. I'd like to echo, um, the sentiments of my colleagues. Fourth of July is coming up in a couple of days. Hope everyone has a very happy and safe holiday, um, and please enjoy it responsibly. I know there will be lots of fireworks going off in the city, so again, please, please be safe. Um, and we look forward to seeing everyone next week. Thank you.
Five B, for introduction and ordinance, creating and establishing special city account number is noted entitled, "Police Grants for Receiving Funds from Multiple Short-Term or Pass Through Police Grant Sources That Require Fund Accounts Separate from the General Fund."
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item five B be introduced into its proper committee.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Five C for introduction, a resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to apply for and execute a grant for the redevelopment assistance capital program through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Office of the Budget in the amount of two million dollars, accepting and dispersing the grant, and coordinate the use of the grant funds with Scranton Cherry LP for the project to be named the Scranton Counseling Center.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that item five C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. Uh, this has come before us, uh, I think a few months ago in last year. Uh, so I think total, the state has invested four million dollars in this project, uh, which I couldn't be happier about, uh, because this is going to revitalize, uh, the former, um, Button Factory, or, uh, on Cherry Street, three hundred block of Cherry Street. So it's gonna revitalize that building, which really needs it. Anybody who who is driven by that can understand. And it's also gonna provide a great opportunity for the redevelopment of the entire three hundred block of Adams Avenue as a follow-up project, which is again sorely needed. Um, anybody who works downtown or who travels downtown knows that the three hundred block of Adams Avenue, uh, gets congested very quickly because of the drop-off and pickup at the Scranton Counseling Center. Uh, so, and, and the building there is really not meant for, uh, that type of environment. So this is going to, um, revitalize really two neighborhoods in the three hundred block of Adams Avenue and in South Scranton. So, again, I, I wanna thank Governor Wolf for his commitment to this project and, uh, look forward to seeing it to its finality. Thank you.
Um, regarding this project, I agree with much of what Councilman Gahn mentioned, but I do have a, a couple of different questions. As was mentioned, this is actually the third piece of legislation we've received regarding this project. Uh, the first was in two thousand seventeen, which was a one million dollar grant. Um, earlier this year, they received a, another million dollar grant, and this is for an additional two million dollar grant from the state. Um, while I, I fully support this project and wanna see it happen, I would like to understand a little bit more, maybe possibly from somebody from the governor's office or Senator Blake's office, the process, um, of approval for the R cap grants. Um, it seems that an awful lot is going to one developer. And, and again, not speaking ill of the project or the work that he does, 'cause he does great projects. I just wanna have a better understanding on how these funds are finally approved, because I know there are a number of other large projects going on throughout the city, um, that have not received the significant infusion of, uh, public dollars. Um, so I definitely do wanna look into that a little bit further before the final vote, but as, as was mentioned, I do support the project. I do think it will help revitalize, um, that portion of the city. Um, just looking for a little bit of a better understanding why, um, one project could draw from the same pot three, four times when another project may not receive any funding. Um, I'm sure there's a good reason for it, but just so we could understand better on our end. Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Five D for introduction, a resolution, appointment of Stephanie L. Bressler, Ph.D., fourteen oh two East Gibson Streets, Scranton, Pennsylvania, one eight five one zero, as a member of the Human Relations Commission, effective February twenty-seven, two thousand eighteen. Dr. Bressler will be replacing Lisa Stanvich, who resigned on September eighteen, two thousand seventeen. Dr. Bressler will fill the unexpired term of Lisa Stanvich, which is scheduled to expire on September twenty-three, two thousand eighteen.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that item five D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, six A, reading by title, file of the council number twenty-four, two thousand eighteen, and ordinance creating and establishing special city account number is noted entitled, "Two thousand sixteen settlement award for the receipt of undistributed funds from the two thousand sixteen Police and Fire Court Award, City of Scranton, two thousand sixteen settlement fund account."
You've heard reading by title of item six A. What is your pleasure?
I move out item six A, pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Seventh order, seven A, for consideration by the committee on rules for adoption, resolution number fifty-five, two thousand eighteen, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into an administrative services agreement by and between the City of Scranton and Phoenix Administrators LLC, doing business as Performance Health, a licensed Ohio third-party administrator, to provide discounts to employees and their dependents through the Commonwealth Card Program.
As chairperson for the committee on rules, I recommend final passage of item seven A.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Goham?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes. I hereby declare item seven A legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven B for consideration by the committee on community development for adoption, resolution number fifty-six, two thousand eighteen, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of a grant application by the City of Scranton through the Keystone Historic Preservation Grant from the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials to accept the grant funds in the amount of eighty thousand dollars to begin, excuse me, to begin preservation work on the Scranton municipal building.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the committee on community development?
As chair for the committee on community development, I recommend final passage of item seven B.
Second. On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Goham?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes. I hereby declare item seven B legally and lawfully adopted. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Meeting adjourned.